All right, try it again. Welcome, everyone, to the workshop meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Wednesday, July 22. This meeting is being recorded. It's not being broadcast live right now, but it's being recorded so that we'll be able to be broadcast on WCTV. If we could just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So this is our second workshop meeting in a series all around the reopening of the schools, so I will turn it over to Dr. Shaverhood.
Thank you very much. Today, we had a Zoom meeting with the Commissioner. This evening, transportation information will be released. Right now, it looks like they are reducing it to approximately a third of the bus. So that certainly is going to provide, give us some implications on how we will be transporting students. The Commissioner also stated that they are still in negotiations with MTA and that they hope to have something released tomorrow. Regardless of that, we will have some more information about days, and they did indicate that there would be some time on learning that may be flexible as well, which certainly is beneficial to us. At today's meeting, we're going to talk about special education, and then I have a few other pieces to share with you that's been going on. So I turn it over now to Melissa Fay.
Can I ask a question about transportation?
Sure. Before, Melissa, I'm sorry, before you go, Mary just had a question.
So I know that parents have received information asking if they want to ride the bus and if, you know, they should do, payment would be due. And so my question is, has anything been said about if, for instance, we go remote or we are hybrid, that the price will be reduced?
Well, I think one of the things that will be discussed at the open, at the first meeting will be looking at parents that paid last year and providing an option for them because they didn't ride a third of the year. If I was going to make that decision, I would have done something, but since it was a committee vote, it needs to come to the committee. As well as parents this year, if they pay, then I think flexibility is certainly the name of the game, and to be able to provide them with some options would be the right thing to do. But that is a vote that will have to take place at the committee.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Melissa.
No, it's okay. No worries. So I'm pulling it up on my screen. I, um, I'm just gonna, I guess, read off of it since we're not gonna be able to see it. I think that both documents were shared with the committee. So we put together a task force of special education staff. We had on that staff one, at least one member. Some schools had two members of the special education staff at their school. All the principals had copies and were able to put, give input to the plans. We had one parent, special education parent from each school, some with multiple children in the district, but one that represented each school. And in that group of parents were some of our parents whose children have probably some of the most severe needs in the district. And the reason why we had asked for them to participate is because those are the students that have a lot of health risks. And so I think it's really important to have those parents involved in what planning might look like for fall, because I'm sure that they are incredibly worried and concerned about their students, about their children. On our task force, I'm gonna read you, I guess, the names of the people on the task force. Is that appropriate?
We have it.
We have it.
You have it? Okay, so I don't need to tell you. But we did have one member of each domain of related services as well. So there was a social worker, BCBA, somebody from the occupational therapy team, our physical therapist, a member of our speech and language pathology, a social worker, and one of our school nurses. So that's all the people that constituted our team. We've met now twice. I do have, we've taken pretty extensive notes, and a lot of people have really given us a lot of good feedback. And we're in the process now, through this process, we've decided that we have to have a separate kind of shoot-off of a preschool plan, so that's in the works right now. So we should have that within the next day or two. That speaks about the special education pieces that would follow the same kind of pattern, but there are a few things that are specific to preschool that kind of came up through this planning process that we hadn't, hadn't come to the forefront of our planning. So we're now in the process of creating kind of an offshoot plan for preschool that's specific to the needs of that population at DECS. And Mrs. Chandler has been involved in that, as well as our preschool coordinator, Anne-Marie Fillian, and a couple of other folks at DECS who have been helping out with that plan as well. So this is a difficult plan, I think, to put together. I'm fortunate enough to sit right now on a DSC panel with 27 other special ed directors who have 10 to 20 years' experience in the state in this role. So I've been able to have a lot of really good conversations with them about what their district plans look like. I've been able to see 27 other district plans on top of other ones that we have looked at from Connecticut, Rhode Island, Mississippi. I mean, we've looked at plans from all over the place, trying to kind of get a good grasp of what other people's plans are looking like, making sure we're not forgetting anything in our planning, and making sure that we find a model that is comprehensive and addresses as many needs as we possibly can. So our charge is really to review all of the guidance, and there's a lot of it. So I've added a couple of those pieces of guidance onto the, one of the documents that you all had access to. You can click right on the link, and the link will take you right to the latest CDC information, the latest from the American Pediatric Association, the Commissioner's notes. So all of those will be easily accessible for parents to just be able to click on and see what this, the latest guidance is. And as new guidance comes out, we will update that so that the parents are able to quickly find that guidance in one location to make it as easy as possible. So we really tried to make research-based decisions, taking into consideration making sure that we're providing quality services with fidelity to as many students as possible, which is really the charge that the Commissioner and the Department of Ed and the U.S. Department of Ed have given us for special education. Try to get as many of our students who receive 75% or more, spend 75% or more of their time outside of class, making those students, as well as other students who are struggling in other areas, a priority in our planning. So we've tried to focus our plan on that specific population of students so that we are able to really address the most severe and intensive needs that we have in our district. So we have two drafts that I shared with you that are the drafts, the working drafts that we've been working on. One is more of a programmatic draft, so it talks a lot about our specific programs and the plans to bring them back and all the considerations that we have to make. And the other one is, I think, more of what I would consider a letter that we would share with parents, that kind of goes over very specific protocol for special education of what we would do in a variety of different situations. So it talks about masks, it talks about hand washing, it talks about PPE, it talks about all of those pieces and breaks them all down. I think that we have done as thorough of a job as we can do. I've spent a lot of time talking to parents in our district and some parents who have students who attend out-of-district schools and programs as well. It's, you know, my feeling is we have to do the best we can and make things as safe as we can for our students, and that is our charge in this crazy situation that we're in. I know as a mother of, you know, having to send my children back to school eventually, I can completely understand the concerns that the parents are expressing to us, and it is difficult. I sit on my daughter's and my son's committees for their schools for return in the fall, you know, potential return in the fall as well. So I get to hear a lot of feedback from a lot of different places, and it's, it is, you know, definitely not a perfect science, but I think we have put together a plan that is as comprehensive and needs to be flexible and working as we go, so that we're able to get new guidance and quickly adjust and amend plans to meet that new guidance as it comes out. So on that note, I will take any questions, suggestions, and I think a lot of the task force is on the meeting in Zoom form, so.
Okay, so are there any questions?
So you're prior, oh, I'm sorry. Prioritizing those with the most severe needs first. I know when the, DSC came up with the idea also of, what about those students whose level of engagement with remote learning closure was, was low? What are we doing with that type of student? Are they being serviced as well in person, or are they gonna be remote if we go hybrid? Or we're not there yet?
Well, I think we have, we, a lot of our plan, because our plan is a small piece of the larger plan, I've also been working with nursing, because nursing also plays a large part in this, of protocols on how we deal with bodily fluids and then the potential necessity for, oh, sorry, and the potential need to, you know, for physical intervention with children if they're trying to, you know, if they get panic or tried to run away or out of a classroom or, you know, something to that effect, how would we be able to handle that and be safe and effective? So those pieces are coming out of our nursing staff and our, and they're getting their guidance from the Department of Health, and so all of these pieces kind of have to come together. And then once the district's plan of hybrid, in-person, remote comes out, we will better be able to kind of hone in on exactly what our plan would look like. But our charge from the department and from the Commissioner is to do our best to get our most intense needs back as much as possible, as safely as possible.
Mary?
So I know you said that you looked at a lot of different plans, so I am curious why the committee decided to just go with the Lexington plan, word for word.
So we, the Lexington plan, if you look at some other plans, is not that far off from many other plans. I think we liked the way that it flowed, so we kind of used it as a jumping-off point. We did change a good deal of the plan, but the structure we liked. We also pulled in a lot of Cape Cod Collaborative's planning that was for their day-school children, but a lot of it really spoke to our intense needs, and it was very thorough, so we pulled a lot of that into our plan as well. So one plan really reflects, and we did ask Cape Cod Collaborative for the, for the permission to utilize their structure of their plan, and Paul Hilton told us that that was, we could do that. So we're thankful for that. But we basically used their template to build our plan, and originally, we built our plan just as a jump-off point for our committee to get in and our principals to get in and say, what works, what doesn't work, what are we taking out, what do we need to add in? So it wasn't meant to be, you know, a be-all, end-all plan originally. It was just a jumping-off point of a plan that we thought was really good, that we had seen, and then we kind of took it from there and it morphed into a specific plan for our district and our students' needs.
So maybe at some point, you can point out the things that were just Wareham's, because when I'm reading it, it looks like exactly Lexington's plan, except for our programs that are listed.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to go in and do the track changes to show you all the changes that were made, but every member of our committee added, took out different pieces of it as we were going. And as recently as probably an hour before I came, I was just going through all the emails of the changes and edits that people had made, so I have to go in and accept them, answer them, research them. So I just did that one more time about an hour ago, just to make sure that everything was kind of clean, or as clean as it can be for right now.
So I have a question related to what Mary is asking. So in, in your plan, which is the same as the Lexington plan, it says, for instance, "Students within each of these programs will be invited to participate in full-time, in-person schooling, should this be determined safe." So does that mean that even, the way I read that is even if Wareham says we're going to be remote, that tells me that, and you've listed our programs, that those students would be invited to participate in, in school? So am I just reading that wrong, or is that?
So we have to remember, this is a draft, and it's a working draft, so we're planning for what the department has asked us to plan for, which is as much in-person services as we deem safe and as we feel we can sustain in our district. So we have the flexibility to be able to, you know, say, some, some districts are saying, great, we're gonna take everybody back five days a week, all the, all the sub-separate students, or all the students that meet the criteria that the state has put forward. Other places are doing a couple days. Some places are doing half-days in the plans that I saw in the last week or two. So the, I think, puzzle pieces are that we have to wait to see what the district's plan is before we can decide what that's gonna look like, so.
Can I just stop you right there for a second? So two weeks from tomorrow, the school committee is gonna be asked to make that decision, but what you're saying is almost the flip of that. So you're saying, once the decision is made, then you'll make the plan, but how can we make that decision if we don't see a plan?
So the plan-
Am I the only one that, I, I feel like we, so this could be true, but it might not be true.
Right.
Do you know what I'm saying? So for me personally, I'm looking for that information to be provided to us, not the other way around, because we, because that's a really big decision that we're being asked to make, and so that's why we're here, to collect that information, but what you're saying is the opposite.
So special education, the, the protocols or the suggestions and the guidance that we're getting is to plan for that, like I said, that specific group of kids for the PL1, the three pages of the IEP that tell us how much service our students need, how many services our students, related services, and how much time outside of a general education classroom with special education teachers our students need. So that is what we are planning for, but the plan, I mean, I think if it, certainly I can talk to the committee about breaking it out. If A happens and the district decides to go remote, completely remote, what is our plan specifically? So we can certainly specify it out a little bit more.
Well, that is how, so I'm sure you're aware that every building has, has committees for each, for each plan, remote, hybrid, in-person. So do you have the same?
Well, our, our plan has to be adjusted. So like I said, we've talked about, you know, our charge again is to bring as much back as we can, and so that would depend on what plan the district decides to go with. So for example, if the district decided to go completely remote, we would have to then decide how much we could provide our special education students that fit that criteria that the state is giving us. Would that be a couple of half-days? Would some services be remote? Would parents have? So we've built all of that into our planning, so maybe it's not articulated in a way that's clear.
So do you have that, do you have, so we don't have that?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess, when, what, just for me, what I was expecting is that you would say, well, if we're in-person, then this will be the special ed, this is how we will handle this, and if we're hybrid, but that, so maybe that's something that you're working on. But in order for us to make that decision, I think that we really need, well, for me, I, I would really like to see that information.
So in talking today, today to a couple of people, a couple of the directors across the state, we had brought this topic up, and while we have to wait to see what the district plan is, we still have to plan for the most services that we can provide. So that is kind of our end game, is what is the, ideally, what would be something that we would put forward? And then if we couldn't do that, and if we had to go with a hybrid plan, would that look like half-days? Would it look like only four days a week? But again, our charge from the Commissioner and from the Department of Ed and from the Special Ed Department at the state level is to plan for as much instruction as we possibly can do, that we feel we can do safely within our district. So that's what we have to plan for. I would really be remiss to make a completely remote plan for our special education students, because that is not the charge that the state has given us. I, I would need to kind of take the plan that we are putting forward and with all of the same parameters to it, about masks, about all of the PPE, all of the different pieces that we put in place, and we'd need to figure out at that point how many days, half-days, full-days, half the students, all the students at the same, what would it look like? But the plan will remain the same. So I, I think that that part hasn't changed. I think the committee, when we have been discussing this, that's really what we are planning for, is what is the most that we can do? What is the most that we can provide? And then once we have a district plan, we will say, okay, it's not five days a week, it's four, or it's not full days, it's half. What can we do safely, meeting all of the guidance that we're getting from all of the different agencies that are cooperating with us?
Okay. Can I, I just wanna say, I do understand that it's a daunting task, and I, I understand there's an enormous amount of work going in, but Tracy also had something to add, I think, in the back, so, okay.
Oh, no, go ahead. I just, I just don't know if it would be helpful, so, I don't know if it would be helpful, but I'm thinking, like, on each of our plans, if we put what would happen with the special ed students within those plans, so that you could see it, that we could work with Mrs. Fay's task force and they can look at what we have. So I think it's a larger portion than just our senior students, like, what's gonna happen with the inclusion students and, and small group students, but we could add that to our plans so that it's clear. You're telling me that it is an enormous decision, and you have to respond to the public, so that might be helpful.
Right.
Just include them within our plans.
Yeah. Yes, yes, I think it would be, and I'm not looking to add, you know, to make more work for anyone, but yes, that would be very helpful, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, did you?
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So I know that on, on the special ed section, there's a, a lot of kids that require in, across the board, one-to-one. So how is that gonna be factored in for those kids that require those one-to-one services in regards to staffing, both remote and in-person, when we're gonna be, you know, in reading some of the plans from even last week with some of these other models, when we're pulling these PARs and these, these people that are normally geared to these one-to-one students to, to be helping with some of this remote access and some of this, the spreading out with the six feet versus three feet, and, and trying to move things into a way that we can get things spread out? How is there a plan to accommodate the, the one-to-ones? Is this accounted for, or is this something that is still in the works? And like, what number of students require the one-to-one per school? Is that all gonna be included in this as well?
Yeah, so we, we've already taken that to account. So we only have three students in the district who actually have one-to-one level of support, but we have had many discussions with the related service providers and the teachers and the principals, especially about our level of comfort of related service providers, some who typically, outside of COVID, cover different buildings, and what that would look like and how we'd have to adjust that, so that we'd have as little traffic coming in and out of buildings as possible.
So, but potentially, like, a parent could see the need that, now that the student isn't in school with a trained special education teacher in, say, like, in, in a classroom that's geared, or in one of the TLC classrooms, for example, and they normally wouldn't have one-to-one, but because of all the upheaval and the change, there, those needs could change. So even if you have three one-to-ones district-wide currently, are you prepared for a shift where that may increase due to the situational upheaval? I know a lot of things with drastic change. It could change the behavioral issues or anything, you know, anything on the spectrum that was changed is, is very hard for those kids to handle. Do we have the capacity or the plan or the backup to be able to then provide additional one-to-one without disrupting what these current plans are going to be in regards to the, the current hopeful use of the PARs for each plan?
So I think that the staffing that we have is what, what we have, right? So we, we need to kind of be creative in the way that we bring students back in a plan, like, if we're creating a draft plan like we have. And so we've addressed all of these pieces that we worry about, and I'll take your example of the Therapeutic Learning Center. If we have 10 students in a therapeutic learning center, our plan would never be to bring all 10 back at the same time. We would add additional support to those classrooms, the social workers and counselors, behavior supports through VCBAs, and have those folks work to kind of get one group in, and I think you'll see that on one of the plans, it talks about this grade comes first, and we see how that goes, and then we bring the next grade. And so it would have to be very, it's very calculated, the way that we would adjust it. I don't think we're ever gonna have a perfect answer of, or be able to identify or, you know, we don't have a crystal ball to know exact, every single thing that might possibly happen, but I think the plan that we have and the group that has put this plan together and has put, have input put into it, have thought about as many of these pieces and come up with as strong of a plan as we can to keep our students, staff, families safe.
Thanks.
I'm just gonna go to Dr. Shaverhood, and then I'll come back to you, can I?
Thank you. I think that the task force that Mrs. Fay put together has, you know, created a basis of a plan. It now needs to go to the buildings, where the buildings can get staff, their staff, their building-level staff, to review the plan and then make it work for their building. You know, with the department heads, with the various teachers, with the paraprofessionals, with the related service people, they know what's unique to their building, and it really needs to have their imprint on the plan at this point. I think one of the things that we have agreed upon from the start is there is a group of students that needs to come back. In whatever form that may, will look like, we still would like to have those students back so we can work with them. From a district standpoint, or from a task force standpoint, I think that's very hard to outline, and that's why we now need the building-level folks to get involved and tell us, what will it look like? So if everybody is remote, are we still able to bring our, our group of students in that we all agree need to come in, and how do we do that safely? The answer may be no, but if it's yes, then it needs to be building-specific. We also need to know, how are we going to meet the needs of the IEP? Because every student, when they're remote or we're hybrid, we still need to meet those needs. Now, how are we going to do that? And that's why we need the handprints of our building-level folks now involved. So that would be my suggestion for the next week, to have that happen, so we can come back to you with much more detail at this point, that the base has been established.
Okay. Mike? No, okay. Any other questions? I had some other questions about what was in here, but just, if, you know, I'll just wait till next week, and then I'm sure those questions will be answered.
May I add some other things now?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna let you know what has been going on in the last week. We've met with counselors, social workers at each building level. They've developed some plans about back-to-school, how are we going to outreach, how will we support our students, and that work continues. That was at every grade, at every building level. We have met with the custodians. We have a checklist that we will be using in every building that will outline what the cleaning procedures will be. That way, it will be uniformed, and if there's any questions, we have something to go off of that, yes, it's been covered, or no, it's not, and we continue to hone that list. We contacted the school physician. We're waiting to hear confirmation for his attendance at the next meeting next week. I've also spoken with Bob Ethier, Board of Health. He will also be willing to attend next week, so he will be here for a short time. We're currently working on the exposure plan, so what happens if we're back in school, we're remote, we're hybrid, and a student or staff test positive or is ill? How are we going to handle that? So that's in the process right now, being worked upon. We're going to be, I've shared it with the building administrators. I'm going to be sharing it with the MTA as well, so they can have their feedback. We're working on protocols and expectations. So what are our safety expectations for everyone? Students, staff, et cetera? And how do we teach students to wear masks? How do we work with social distancing, et cetera, et cetera? We just received the temporary, quote, unofficial guidance for transportation. I expect that to be released this evening, as I shared earlier, so that will put us on the track of- on the track of working on the transportation information, that we can start saying, yes, we can do this, or we are really going to need to look at the timetables. And finally, Dr. Schwam and, and a large group of people have been working on the plan for instruction, and I know I put you on the spot, but would you like to just briefly share what that's going to look like?
Yeah, we're actually trying to take all of the various components into consideration as we look at the expectations of staff overall, in the three, in the two models, really. We know what to expect in person, for the most part, but we're looking at, if it's remote or hybrid, a number of different areas that we think we could do much better in delivering curriculum and instruction and assessment to kids, even though I think we did a pretty good job in Wareham overall, due to luck, and having devices, and great staff, right? We, we pulled it off fairly well, but I think there are, because of the, the difference of the timing, and it's not the last three months, it's the beginning of a school year, we really need to be clear on what it is that we're going to deliver. So, a plan, I, I did a, I created a plan from Common Sense 4.0, I believe, is the, where I received the initial plan, and then reworked it. It's about 20 pages, different guidance, different ways in which you can reach students, and different ways that they'll, what, what they need to do with office hours, or with a certain amount of expectation for present, being present, you know, how many times is, is enough if it's remote and hybrid, and how do we manage that, and things like that. So, anyway, the document was sent out yesterday to the principals, to share with their teams. I know that Tracy met with her remote learning group again this morning, and they took some of those and added it. So, each school will then look at their unique situation, and the grade level, and the age they teach, and then tweak it, so that it fits with what they're trying to do. So, it should be really helpful when it comes back around, and then, of course, we have to think about, then we'll meet with the union and talk to them about how they would like to proceed, and we'll negotiate. Hopefully, we'll come to a, a place where everybody feels pretty good about what we're trying to do, because with all of this going on, to me, anyway, the bottom line is, we have a responsibility to educate our children. That's what school is. We're supposed to educate. And so, with all the other stuff, I get it, it's important, we need to address it, but we, but most importantly, that's what's going to give our kids the biggest bang for their buck for their entire life. So, we need to really focus on what that means, and how we're going to deliver that under this current condition, so that's where we're at with that.
Thank you.
To move on, we, as you know, or may not know, I sent out a letter and a survey to parents, and asking them for their response. I checked, I sent it out yesterday, I checked at 3:30 today, and I have had 495 responses. So, I just want to share with you where we're at with some of the vital questions, not that they're not all vital, but the big ones. Right now, I have had 161 parents from DeCA's complete the survey, 112 from Minnet, 203 from the middle school, and surprisingly, 205 from the high school. So, the personal preference, so the question was, my personal preference for school this year would be for all students to return face-to-face, 147, or 29.7%. The hybrid model, 172, or 34.7%, and remote learning, 176, 35.6.
All right, close.
Yeah, his, and it's gone like that the whole time, it's really gone back and forth, neck and neck. I asked the question, would your child be comfortable wearing a mask for periods no longer than 90 minutes? 166 agree, at 33.5, 228 disagree, at 46.1, and 101 are neutral. So, there's more, you know, I certainly will keep you updated with more information as we come. I would urge people to please send out the questionnaire, have people respond, it's vital that you have this feedback. I also sent out a survey yesterday to the Wareham staff. Right now, I, at 3:30, I had 214. At DeCA's, I had 67, Minnet, 36, at the middle school, 43, multi-service center, 13, and at the high school, 52. Sky, oh, you almost won again, not quite, yeah. So, I ask, what was your preferred model for beginning the school year? Face-to-face, 99 people said it, that was their preferred, at 40, no, that's not right, I'm sorry, it's remote. 99 said the remote, at 46.3. At face-to-face, 32, at 15%, and hybrid, 79, at 36.9. So, clearly, the faculty and staff are looking at remote as being their preferred. The next question followed, why did you answer as you did? And the number-one answer right now is safety, to make sure that everybody is safe. I then asked, what concerns you most about returning in the fall? 30, 132 said, wearing masks for an extended period of time. 174 said, coming into contact with a person who's infected. 103, lack of sanitation. And then, the other one that was rather large, 141 cited, building air quality. So, and then, I'll give you one more. How important are the following factors in returning to work? So, very important, safety protocols in place and followed. Not having students move from class to class, 83. Risk of virus transmission, 177. Individual health issue, 81. Having time to plan lessons was very important, at 76. And changing the opening of school pass, Labor Day, was 76 as well. So, we're having people weigh in, which I greatly appreciate, and I hope that, if you haven't turned in the survey, people will take time to complete that, because that's also valuable information.
It's even more valuable when your response rate is so high.
Mm-hmm.
It's great.
I think April has.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I just had a question of, you said, how many of the staff survey, returned the survey? It was 200 and something total?
214.
And how many staff do we have in the district as a whole?
Oh, about three.
Okay, so, that's a really, that's a fair proportion then, okay.
Yeah. All right, so, I think a couple of things that should be explored is the school calendar, and really moving back the start of school for students. That would take a vote of the committee. And there's several thoughts that we have about this, and we would like to explore some more information, but to present you with several options. One of the options that we would present would be, we would delay it past Labor Day, and then we would start in a hybrid model. We could look at a second option would be, we push it past Labor Day, but then start in a remote model, to get us through the month of September, get people used to teaching in the remote setting, getting past the hot temperatures, and then bring students back. That would be an option. And we're going to continue to look at time on learning. They did say that there may be exemptions for that. We would like to do some more calculations with remote, with hybrid, et cetera, and how do we make that work? But I think that there's several options that really need to be examined.
Would it be reasonable to ask you to have a draft for next week, and then we can plan to vote on the six?
Mm-hmm.
So, that'll give us time to discuss it.
Mm-hmm.
I thank you for the, those are interesting options, and I thank the committees for all their work. It's, I'm thankful for the list, this is a huge list of stakeholders and people involved, and that's always a good thing. But you, you mentioned maybe starting, starting off remote day one, and I remember from the last meeting, the last workshop, it was stressed how important it is to, to know your students, to, to, if, if you're going to start off remote, I mean, you're not going to know them at all, it's day one, and, and that concerns me. But, but it's interesting, it, you know, I wouldn't necessarily vote against that, but, but it's something, something I'm worried about.
Right.
But when you look at the response from faculty, like, so, following last week, we then did a survey, and we started to see where their concerns lie, and, and there were a number of faculty who have a couple of concerns about coming in.
Yeah.
And then, they have concerns about the time they need to get up to speed, right? So, we're just kind of taking in all of that information to figure out, how is it we can really make this work?
Yeah.
Effectively for, for all stakeholders, I guess.
I, I think one of the other pieces that would be helpful would be to share some of the work that our counselors and social workers have been doing, because they have been looking at, how do we begin building those bonds as soon as we know who's in people's classes? We just need to do that. How do we reach out? How do we make those types of connections? I know that the DeCA's staff have worked really hard, that we have some supplies that are going to be ordered, that they can start sharing with kids, and working on that, but you're exactly right, we need to build it, but we also need to make sure people are safe, too. And I have staff that will man the buildings.
It's certainly a concern for all students to make those connections, but I think about the ones who are just entering DeCA's, just entering Minnet, you know, making that transition, and, yeah. But it, it's important for everyone. April?
I just have questions for a thing that, more of like, kind of like, an op, a possible request for the next workshop, and to see if we can have this to see, but I, I know at the last one, there was mention of reaching out, should there be the remote plan to some of the daycare centers or preschools that would be providing childcare for some of these families and helping with curriculum? So, I would like to know feedback about how, if that has been done, and how receptive they were, their staff was to helping to follow our curriculum while, you know, in a childcare setting, for those parents that, if, if it is a hybrid or remote, for those remote portions, that would have to work. So, I would like to know input from them, if they were receptive to helping, I don't see why they wouldn't be, but what their biggest concerns would be, or their hurdles were. Another thing I would be curious to know is, with each of these task force, what they felt their biggest hurdle was, to come to a, a consensus, like, what they felt like was the hardest thing to, to plan? I think that would be helpful, just for us to understand how, how difficult the task was for them, either whether it was parent pushback, or, you know, physical, was it a building constraint? Is it a staff constraint? Like, what they felt the biggest hurdle was in coming up with the plan? I think that would just help me understand, I don't know if it would help anybody else, but how they eventually arrived at whatever consensus per plan. And then, again, when, I know you said, Dr. Shavell, that the bus information, transportation would be coming, you know, kind of down the line, and we'll be getting that information. So, if, if only a third of a bus is able to be utilized, how, if, if it's, again, I know last week was mentioned, possible staggered start times and things like that. So, I would just like, I know that this is probably already in the works, but these are the things that I would just really like to see very mapped out, just for parent peace of mind. Most of the things that I've seen and read from parent input, you know, have been, you know, I've seen a lot, and again, what I mentioned last week, making sure that parents understand the difference between homeschooling and remote learning, if that's, if they're given the choice. I think a lot of people are saying homeschooling, and I don't know that all parents understand that that's a different animal altogether than remote learning. So, some may be saying, I'm going to choose to homeschool, and meaning to keep their kid home and remote learn, and they're, they're not understanding that homeschooling is a completely different entity with completely different curriculum. So, just that education piece to the parents, like, if this is what you're thinking, are you actually thinking of homeschooling, or are you actually thinking of preferring remote learning to keep your kid home and safe? So, those are some of the things that I've seen and heard, and would just like more clarification on.
I, I know, two weeks ago, it sounded to me like, you know what, we're coming back. Last week, oh, hybrid's the way to go. This week, I'm getting more of the vibe of it's going to be remote, and I know we're all in the same fix, really. So, I don't know if there's a way of thinking outside the box also, because we all agree that getting that relationship with students is key to making any of this work. Is there a way, if we thought, say, we decided to go remote, but is there a way of maybe bringing in a, a third of a grade at a time, unstaggered by week or something, just to make that connection, where you really empty out the buildings, and you have a small group in, you teach them how to use the technology, but you, more importantly, you make that relationship, and you at least get a, a name with a face both ways? And maybe that would calm some of the teacher fears, which I understand, very much so, as well as the parent fears, but also help build that relationship. So, maybe that's something we could think of when you get with your committees again. Also, is there a way of, some kind of creative staggering, where you really reduce the numbers of, of kids?
Like an orientation?
Almost, but maybe multiple days. I, I really, I'm just thinking about it as, as we go here.
No, I think that's, I don't.
But something like that.
As we are.
Exactly.
Thinking about it as we go.
May Bethany say something?
I just wanted to reiterate that in the spring, I know in schools at DeCA's, we had families, they didn't come into the school, but we had them in our parking lots to make those relationships continue. So, I think that we just need to be creative about it. I know that the care program is doing house visits, and we're dropping off, we are still building those relationships, so continuing to think about ways, and I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that staff, the care staff this summer, the boost staff are making solid relationships. I had a boost, the boost teacher in today, building these hand, like, buckets every week, dropping off, sorry, my mask is falling off, let me fix this. There we go. Building materials for students every week, that they can use to work with while the teaching is going on. So, there's, there's amazing things going on, so I think that we can think creatively and make those connections with students, as we have been, and moving forward and progressing to someday having them back in.
Thank you, Bethany.
And finally, you know, I really do think at this point, in the next couple of weeks, we need to go back through student handbooks and revisit the handbooks to see what adjustments need to be made. As well, I do believe that there are some policies that the committee will need to revisit and look at. I have a list of policies for you to take a look at, the titles, I did not copy all the policies, but I can send that to you, but I think the policy committee needs to get going in the very close future as well.
Okay, all right. Deanna, I see that you, do you want to come up?
I just, I just wanted to make sure.
You have to push that.
Push it, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you all understood that the MTA is, is proposing a phased-in approach. I don't know if that's been shared with you, but in the phases, making relationships with students and their families is paramount in that. So, we are, you know, and the WA is, is supporting that as well, and, and we'll be talking about that when the time comes, but, um, just to reiterate that we agree with that, and that would be why it would be remote for a time.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Shaverhood, does anyone else have any questions?
I know that the relationship building for, like, for DeCA and the younger kids is a huge thing. They're excited about school, they love to learn, they love seeing their teachers. I remember when my son was at DeCA, he would see his art teacher at Shaw's, and you'd think he saw a movie star, because he's like, that's Ms. Osborne! Like, he was so excited, because you're seeing them out of context, and it's like seeing a superstar. But my concern is, I have a lazy teenager, and keeping them motivated at home, especially without, or with the, not knowing how the sports as a motivator, or the extracurricular activities as a motivator, and that being so unknown. I know that the MIAA has a tentative allowance date for sports as of September 14th, but will that include all sports? Is that only non-contact sports? So because everything's still so up in the air, my concern with the relationship building is teenagers are not wanting to build relationships with teachers at this point. So I just worry about, you know, that remote learning aspect for a lot of kids like mine that need that constant push. I know that the two, of the two that I had in my home, one excelled with the online remote learning, because he was able to do it on his own terms, at his own pace, and his grades are the best they've ever been. And then I have another that, who'd normally been a really great student, because he had those external motivators, who really kind of backslid, and really needed a harder push. So I just, I worry more, I think, not with the remote, because I know how excited the younger kids are, and the parents are more on top of the younger kids. But with an older kid, I don't have to worry about going to daycare with my, he's home while I'm at work. Or, you know, so I worry about how to keep the older kids motivated, and trying to, with the remote learning. So I'd be happy to hear anything that I know, you know, God knows my son, so how they think, what they can do for engagement for that population that wants to roll their eyes at every adult that they see, and think that they know everything. So I would like to, kind of, you know, I would like to hear more about how that's going to be in engaging for the remote, with that older population, that might just check out. So I'm concerned slightly for the high school.
I think, I understand, I don't know if I'm on, I understand the fear, but I guess what I'd like, what I want to say is that, I think we're careful, we're going to be careful about all of the decisions, and none of them are going to be forever. And I think it's just a matter of how we can look at the science and the health of our community, and make sure that that's, that we're safe. But it's just sort of saying, like, we just want to make sure, right? We don't want anything bad to happen. And so that's really the, if we, if we made a decision to go one way or the other, it's only for a certain amount of finite time, right? Until we can move into the next phase. So it's not like permanent. I don't know if that helps or not, but at least it kind of says.
It does, but it doesn't, because I know that a lot of kids get to that point, where they're like, they're nearing that age, where they might know that they can drop out and get a GED. And I would hate to see that happen, or have that get accelerated, for any kid that might have been on that, you know, that line, without that, like, you know, a lot of those kids are saved by their relationships with their teachers, or their coaches, or, you know what I mean? They may have that bond, and I just, I just, it's not that I'm doubting that that will happen, I just want to know, like I said, for next, just to have those plans, and have all of those bases covered, as a what-if scenario. Not necessarily that it's going to happen, or it's going to happen in large quantities, but it's more of, okay, if these are those couple that might have slipped, how are we going to plan?
With them, yeah.
For that, just to be prepared. Not that it's an expectant reality, but just to cover every, like, devil advocate base that there is to cover.
I think, at this point, we can provide temporary plans, but everything is such a work in progress. And so, what we could present to you tomorrow is going to look completely different two weeks from now, with, for many different factors. So as long as everybody understands that piece, then we're happy to provide information to you. Just know, it's a work in progress.
Oh, absolutely. The whole, everything in the universe right now is fluid with this virus, so I get, I understand that completely.
So, I know you mentioned after-school activities that motivate students. The MIA met yesterday, and they've met multiple times over the last month, and they're really thinking outside the box, ways to preserve all three seasons. So there's a lot of ideas that could come into play, and their priority is to try and maintain three seasons this school year. And I agree, you know, that's the carrot at the end of the stick for many of our students, and it's the reason students stay engaged, and stay enrolled, and graduate. And that's great for some kids. Some kids don't need that motivation, they're going to graduate, whether they have sports, extracurricular activities or not, but there's a percentage of the population that needs that. And we're going to make sure we work with the MIA, to make sure that we have as many of these programs as we can in place. And I do think, you know, you hit it right on the head with the relationships, it's at the high school, at all levels, it's about relationships. But I think it might be even more important at the high school level.
Thank you, I agree.
Thanks.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? So I don't want to end the meeting without acknowledging the enormous amount of time, and effort, and dedication from everyone in the room today, everyone on the list, everyone in every building, that's working so hard this whole summer, on all of these plans. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that. So I guess we'll, we'll meet again next Wednesday, at 4:30 workshop, and then again, the following week, on August 6th. I would just ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0. Thank you.